Good evening. Today is December 7th. Time is 6:30 PM, and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the virginity and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Kuzmato.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Resident.
Treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Clerk Posey, here. Supervisor Viviano.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Moving on to item two is approving the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I have a proposed removal of item number 20 and also a proposed add-on of item number 26, which is request to purchase equipment for senior center computer lab in the amount of $41,481.95.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido to approve the agenda as amended. Members, please vote.
My box didn't come up, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah, 6-0.
Your vote is showing up, Frank, behind you.
No, it's not showing up. It was 6-0, not 7-0.
It doesn't look like you're logged in.
Okay.
I can log you in from here.
All right, thank you, Roger.
Can we record his vote verbally?
In the meantime. Trustee Kuzmato, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good.
Moving on to approval of the bills.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Is there any discussion on the bill run? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the bill run. Members, please vote.
Roger, his didn't come up again.
It's working now. Trustee Kuzmato, how do you vote on the bill run?
Yes.
Should we take a brief recess and relog his computer?
Yeah, let's do that.
It looks like it showed up.
Oh, it came up this time. Oh, because you put it in.
Yeah, I got you logged in there.
A secret, secret password.
I did all this.
Oh, I was gonna hit "Remember me," but that's okay.
Okay, leave that meeting, Frank.
That's what the problem was.
Okay.
There you go.
I'll join that one.
Okay, re-entering the meeting. Time is 6:33 PM. Moving on to item four, approval of previous meeting minutes from November 16th, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is that the date of the previous meeting? It's not. It was November 30th. To prove the minutes of the previous meetings from November 30th, 2022, and my motion. Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the previous meeting's minutes from November 30th, 2022. Members, please vote. Okay, this takes us to public comment. This is for agenda items only. Anyone participating remotely, if you can digitally raise your hand, you will be called upon. Anyone present? Please approach the microphone. I don't see anybody present. Roger, is there anybody remotely?
No, sir.
No, so moving on from public comment. This takes us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Like make a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety?
Support.
Are there any discussion on the consent items? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Takes us to item eight. Item eight is a request to approve, request approval, I'm sorry, to pay Fishback for professional engineering services to assist the township with the GLWA 96-inch transmission main contingency planning in the amount of $10,000. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Johnson.
All right, so we're gonna, we have not worked with Fishback yet, so I don't know if we're supposed to say request to approve Fishback. We're not actually paying him, approving payment this evening. We're gonna pay him once it's completed. But we met with Great Lakes Engineering and Water and Sewer Met with Great Lakes a few weeks ago to discuss contingency planning in case something were to happen again with the 96-inch and what we could do in terms of providing service to our community as well as trying to get Great Lakes to get further more pressure to the north. So this is just gonna take, working with Fishback to take our hydraulic model and see if we can utilize the two connections we have with Clinton Township to see if it's a viable option using our hydraulic model. So we're gonna be working with Fishback on that along with Engineering to perform and see if it's possible, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question to the chair. It's my understanding that this is to develop a contingency plan to maintain pressure in the event of interruption with the water main, like we had similarly recently. Is it my understanding that the hydraulic model may not be able to support the pressure requirements of Macomb Township?
Yeah, so what that means is, right now, we use our three-meter pits to make sure we have pressure. They wanna see if they're able to, if we're able to not utilize a couple of those and utilize these two connections through Clinton Township if we'd be able to supply enough pressure to this township. So the goal first and foremost is making sure we supply pressure, enough pressure to this township residents in case of an emergency. So we'll be working with Great Lakes Water Authority to see, you know, let them know this is what we need for our township to have adequate pressure and then see what we can do to make that work.
Just so I understand, there's a possibility that it may not work. Is that correct?
No, well, it'll work. So it worked this last time. It worked currently with using, we call MAO 1, 2, and 3, which are our three-meter pits. It worked. They're trying to take us off of them, some of them are connections off of the main line so they can feed other communities to the north. So they're trying to see if they can, if we can get fed through Clinton Township with some of our water, which will allow the bigger mains to serve the communities to the north to allow everyone to have pressure in a contingency situation. They're sort of trying to find different alternatives, or they're asking all communities to do this, or all nearby communities to have this conversation who are affected. But ultimately, if we determine that our ideal situation is we had to do what we did this year, then that's that. But we're just trying to do our due diligence to make sure that what Great Lakes is asking, that we're seeing if we can accommodate.
So if the, I'm sorry if I'm interrupting you. So if the 96-inch water main were to fail again, and this is the one coming out of Port Huron, right?
Yep.
However, Clinton Township's water comes from the south, right?
Yes.
So it would be a different source rather than the 96-inch.
Correct. If the 96 were shut down, everyone's getting fed from the south. They're trying to figure out how can they feed everyone from the south in a way that's more economical in their terms, making sure pressure's getting equalized faster versus having people having boil water alerts for three or four weeks.
Mr. Chair, I guess my question is, is this going to be the end of the studying? Or is this, is it possible that we're gonna be asked to pay another $10,000 down the road in order to develop contingencies?
Yeah, we only have so many connections. We have two connections to Clinton, we have two connections to Chesterfield Township, zero to Shelby, so there's not much more we can do unless the township grows and we have more main, which is what we do every five years with our reliability study, which we're also doing next year. So we do that every five years anyway, but we don't actually utilize it in terms of what pressures are coming through Clinton Township if we were to use them as an emergency source. So this will, this will not be a recurring thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chair, I do have one clarification if I could, Kevin. So is this test to see if the pressure can be provided to the communities in the north, is this benefiting the communities in the north or benefiting us in Macomb Township with this research?
Well, again, it's gonna benefit all of us. The main goal is to make sure, number one, that our residents have pressure, so we're not going to sacrifice our pressure so that somebody further north can have it. It's a, it's a team effort to see how we can all achieve this goal together without sacrificing what we have. If we determine that we can utilize one or two of these connections through Clinton, but we need to utilize our existing PRVs, that'll be the findings, and we have to go with whatever is necessary to make sure that our township functions. At that point, then, we'll see what the best scenario is to get, that'll allow us to have adequate pressure, to also get pressure elsewhere. If that makes sense. It's kind of hard to explain because we're all, it's like, you know, we're all interconnected, you know, so it's, it's, we're trying to shuffle, turn valves on and off to try to see if we can get things going a certain way, kind of like they did with the water break when they pushed everything to the north. They had to turn valves off to get water to go to the north. It's a similar, similar effect, but ultimately, our goal is...
Ultimately, we're paying for something which is a direct benefit to our residents.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I gotta follow up. The question I had when I first read this was, isn't it the contractual obligation of Great Lakes Water Authority to provide water pressure under any and all circumstances and contingencies? And why isn't, and maybe you can answer this and maybe you can't, why isn't Great Lakes Water Authority paying for this study?
Well, they're, they're asking for our information, and we, I mean, well, the challenging part is, we could give them our hydraulic model, and they could infer from our hydraulic model with their information and say, we're gonna do this. We want to control that to show that we know what can and can't work in our community versus Great Lakes telling us what can and can't. That way, we're in control of the information, saying, this can't work. Because if they say it can work and then it doesn't, I want, you know, I want to make sure we're on the hook for that and not them. That makes, you know...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? No more questions. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve Fishback to assist with the Great Lakes Water Authority contingency planning in the 96-inch water main in the amount up to $10,000. Members, please vote. The next item is a request to approve the variance submitted by Florence Cement Company for the Deerbrook subdivision to sawcut concrete on December 11th and Sunday, December 18th, starting at 9:00 AM. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
So recently, you updated hours of operation on Sundays to go from noon until 10 for sawcutting concrete. And so with, because of the, because of the weather, they're requesting that it start at nine o'clock on Sundays. Deerbrook is located on 23 North Side, east of Card Road. It's in a very, very rural area, so they're not near a bunch of homes, so I don't, it wouldn't be a major impact to nearby residents noise-wise, but they do have the opportunities to start at nine o'clock. They can go till 10, but most likely won't because it'll be dark, but they're requesting to start at nine o'clock to get the sawcutting. There'll be sawcutting all day both those days, assuming weather permitting.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, so if they are unable to accomplish what they need to on those two days, will they have to come back for another variance?
They'll, no, if they can't do it on that Sunday, they'll do it on Monday.
Okay.
They're just, they're hoping, based on their scheduling, to pour the concrete on Friday and Saturday, then cut it on Sunday.
Okay.
They're really pushing on the weather, though.
Yes, I...
They could miss this really easily by one cold front coming through.
Yep, that's, that's the risk they take.
That's their gamble.
And as a side note, too, I do have these two dates, the initial letter and the agenda doesn't have specific dates on it, it just goes open-ended. I did ask them to give me specific dates, but the thread in the email was from a different subdivision question, so I didn't attach it for fear of confusion. So I have these dates listed, so if you guys want to copy that, I can provide it. I just didn't want to add confusion.
Okay. No more questions. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the variance submitted by Florence for the Deerbrook subdivision sawcutting on Sunday, December 11th and Sunday, December 18th, starting at 9:00 AM. Members, please vote.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10, is a request to schedule a public hearing for a streetlighting SAD. This is for Denauith Farms East condominiums for January 11th, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Antiflan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board members, this is a brand-new subdivision that has reached a point in construction where they're ready to install streetlights. We need to put the Special Assessment District in place so that the township can collect the funds from the residents in the future to pay for the streetlights after they've gone in. We've, we're asking for January 11th, 2023, as the date of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Antiflan. Any questions? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to schedule a public hearing for the SAD, streetlighting SAD, for Denauith Farms East, January 11th, 2023. Members, please vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Scoop.
Motion passes unanimously. Do you need a minute?
Yeah, just one minute.
We'll take a two-minute recess.
Yes.
Okay, returning to the meeting. Time is 4:48 PM. Moving on to item 11, we have a request to approve a senior citizen and special program coordinator position in the Parks and Recreation Department. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board members. The Parks and Rec Director is requesting authorization to approve the position of senior citizen and special programmer coordinator. The Parks and Rec Department, along with the supervisor, have been working on a long-term plan to make improvements at the township's senior center. Already underway is the outdoor patio project that's being funded by a community development block grant, and the first part of a three-phase plan to renovate the former sheriff's substation and broadcast media space, also funded by the CDBG. The position being requested will help us achieve the township's goal of improving our public spaces and programming for our senior residents. This position will be responsible for broadening and creating an inclusive senior programming schedule, as well as to create, I'm sorry, lost track here. The position will be responsible for broadening and creating an inclusive senior programming scheduling, as well as to create an environment that is friendly, sociable, and warm, all qualities that our senior residents expect and deserve. Additional duties will include adding more sponsors, increasing attendance and participation at the senior center, budgeting and managing the day-to-day operation of the center. This position will be in compliance with the Ask Me collective bargaining, and we're looking to fill this position in the first quarter of 2023. Thank you for consideration and happy to answer any questions.
So, thank you, Mr. Tabaka. So there's been a lot of discussion on this particular item. I'm gonna ask Mr. DiCaro. Now, this particular position, this is not a budgeted position, correct?
That's correct, sir.
So can you give us a little bit more background as to how we ended up here today?
Sure. So basically, we filled the position earlier in the year. I think we've had, it's like a, looking at the bigger picture, the goal, I think, from the board that I got was to expand programs at the, at the senior center. We're starting to do that. The person who's at the senior center will eventually, in the next year, will also run the dog park. That will take away some of the duties that they would be doing at the senior center. So that's part of the equation. The other part of the equation is, you were all there the other night, our programs are busting at the seams. The community's growing. Every program we have this summer, our concerts, Rosco, tons of trucks, we're getting thousands of people. So we need more help at the rec center to plan these programs. Our thought process was, the person that we have at the senior center also is very talented that could come over and do the stuff at the rec center with us, and then we would post this new position that would give 100% of their time to the senior program. I've met numerous times with the supervisor and HR department, and we just feel at this time, this is the best direction to go in.
Thank you, Mr. DiCaro. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the senior citizen special coordinator position in the Parks and Rec Department. Members, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 2 with Trustee Kuzmato and Treasurer Gillette voting no.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item 12, we have a request to approve the pre-approved procurements for 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Good evening, Board. The purchasing policy requires that competitive bidding be done on procurements that are individually or aggregately above $8,000 in one fiscal year. Budgeted procurements that meet at least one of the competitive bid exceptions, as defined by the purchasing policy, may be presented to the board for approval utilizing the pre-approved procurement process. This process allows the board to collectively review and approve procurements that will not be competitively bid in the upcoming year, rather than have each individual item come before the board on an individual basis. The items listed on the spreadsheet included in the board packet are being recommended for board approval, the justification, the estimated expenditure, and the contract term for each procurement is provided on the spreadsheet. With that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Janet. And just for review, what kind of items typically go on the pre-approved list?
This would be things like software packages that you would not competitively bid because if you didn't renew your website software, you'd spend $50,000 redesigning it instead of $10,000 updating your license. This includes things specific to elections that are required for compatibility with equipment and with everything else the state has going on. There can be memberships that, that are a part of that as well, because it's not something that can be competitively bid. There's only one opportunity to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the pre-approved procurement list for 2023. Members, please vote.
Thank you, Board.
Moving on to the next item, is a request to purchase a new time and attendance system from SHI in the amount of $24,950.
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Tonight, I'm requesting to purchase a new timekeeping system for Macomb Township. The Finance Department currently receives payroll hours through four different methods. This new solution would replace the BSNA time sheets module, as well as the Count Me In system that the Park and Rec uses, and the time card system and paper submissions that the other departments use. The UKG web-based software will allow us to track hours worked, as well as time off reporting in one repository for all employees. Department heads will also have access to their employees' hours worked and time off requests and balances in one location. This technology permits employees to punch in via computer, cellphone, tablet, or time clock, as well as allowing us to geofence employees that would like to punch in on their cell phones, as long as they're within the virtual parameters that we set up. The software, software will integrate into our current BSNA payroll system and is the preferred software of BSNA. The, out of the $24,950 being requested tonight, half of that, about $12,255, is a one-time purchase for a few time clocks for a couple of the different buildings and then the implementation of the software. The ongoing cost for the web-based program and the annual maintenance would be $12,695. With that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. You mentioned that this would be replacing some existing software that's used in Park and Rec and other departments. Is there any offsetting, are we, are we reducing a cost by not, you know, continuing with the existing software in any way? Does that offset any of this?
There would be a reduction of $4,000 in software that we can get rid of, and then with time cards, and she needs to be about $4,400.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, in addition to that, Stacy, I'm sure you can speak on behalf of the labor hours that are spent in using four different systems that Amy from our department currently has to invest to accumulate all this information to produce the payroll.
Yeah, it, it takes her probably about a day and a half just to hand calculate time cards, hand enter them into our payroll system, chase down time off sheets that may or may not match employees' time cards. This will also save time in the HR department as they take all of our time off and input it into a calendar manually. I was told that's maybe about 16 hours a month that they would save because the time off now would all be electronically generated into a calendar, so there would be no manual entry for any of that in HR or in Finance.
Now, in addition to that, for those of you that don't have to use it, the department heads have to receive it via email, approve it, then save it, then email it to three different people. So it is extremely time-consuming, the process that we use now. That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the purchase of the new time and attendance system from SHI in the amount of $24,950. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Yes.
Thank you, Stacy.
[laughing]
Moving on to item 14, this is a request to adopt and publish, excuse me, a Macomb Township ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Article 2 of the Fire Prevention and Protection to provide for repealer, severability, and effective date. So moved. I'm gonna shorten that name down.
Second.
Mr. Tomlinson, do you think you could give us a brief overview of what this was? Were you part of it? You, you weren't part of it directly, but you helped with it.
So what this was is, we were dealing with an issue pertaining to there being sufficient entrance ways for a fire truck to enter into a particular development. The measurement methodology that we had under the fire code made it very difficult in some circumstances, especially for those that would have future access to future points of entry as we develop our subdivisions, to be developed until those other points of access were provided. That didn't make sense. So Mr. Alloia, together with the Fire Department and the Planning and Building Department, or the Planning and Building Department to a certain extent, reviewed that ordinance, and these are where the proposed changes... and these are where the proposed changes came about.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Any questions? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Oliver, to adopt and publish the Macomb Township ordinance, which is amends Chapter 6, Article 2, the Fire Prevention and Protection to provide repealer, severability, and effective date. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 15, is a request to adopt the resolution in support of a Spark Grant application for inclusive playground at Pitchford Park.
So moved, Mr. Chair. Support.
So this item, as it stated in the board packet, this will be one of two tonight. The township is applying for two Spark Grants. We do intend on applying for a third, but the first due date is December 19th. For each of the Spark Grants, it is incumbent, is required that the township pass a resolution in support of. This first one is for an inclusive playground we hope to build at Pitchford Park. That, how I ask your answer? Any questions?
I just had one quick question. It seems like a lot of these grants are kind of a coin toss. What are our odds on getting this one? Roughly?
Probably less than a coin toss.
Okay. Thank you.
There's, there's, there's an unknown number of people applying, communities applying for these Spark Grants. Leanne and I were talking about today, it could be 30 communities, it could be 130, 150, we don't really know. They approve up to $1 million. There's $15 million available in the first round. There's going to be two additional rounds. The good part about it is if these get approved, they want to get this money out right away. So we're hoping that because we are early and because we had basically a shovel-ready project, that, that will weigh in our favor. But we really won't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Question. If we were to get them, are we ready to?
Yes.
To build?
Park has already been awarded, the contractor is starting work right now.
Okay.
This would fold seamlessly into what they're doing over there. We would simply go out to bid for this piece of it as a separate standalone item, and our contractor can accommodate that, that adaptation. Either they would bid on it themselves, or one of the playground companies would, and they would make accommodations. So in theory, if we were to get this, the playground portion of it, which isn't in the original bid specs, could be done with the entire park, and we'd have it all done once and for all.
Good. Toss that coin.
We are hopeful to get it, because the timing is perfect. If there's no more questions, there's a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to adopt the resolution in support of the Spark Grant application for inclusive playground at Pitchford Park. Clerk Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Guzmanno?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviana?
Yes. The resolution is adopted. All right. Moving on to item 16. This is the second resolution in support of a Spark Grant, and this one is for the, an application, this would be for the pathway completion and observation deck at Town Center. And before I ask for the motion, I'll just explain that we already have a tap grant that we've been approved for that will build a path along Town Center Park and along the pond that's just to our north. And this particular plan would be to complete the pathway on the remaining portion of the pond, and including an observation deck. So with that, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Nevers, to adopt the resolution in support of the Spark Grant application for the path completion and observation deck at Town Center. Clerk Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Guzmanno?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviana?
Yes. The resolution is adopted. So the next item is item 17. This is a request to approve Planning Commission reappointment for Mr. Richard Bentley. Motion to approve?
Support.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to reappoint Mr. Richard Bentley to the Planning Commission for a three-year term set to expire December 31st, 2025. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Chair, I move to consolidate items 18 and 19 on the agenda into one item. Okay. And I'll move to approve the consolidated 18 and 19.
Second.
Okay. All right. These two items, this would be to reappoint Peggy Accardo and Milt Miller, both to the Historical Commission, both for three-year terms to expire December 31st, 2025. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. There's a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to reappoint both Peggy Accardo and Milt Miller to the Historical Commission for a three-year term set to expire December 31st, 2025. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Miller, and Peggy, wherever you are. This would bring us to item 21. This is, would be the first of four Building Board of Appeals reappointments. Mr. Chair, I would move that we, what about item 20? Item 20 was removed from the list. Oh, I'm sorry. Then I would make the motion to consolidate items 21 through 24 into one item, and I would make the motion to approve them in their entirety. Okay. Support. These items are, as I just stated, to approve the Building Board of Appeals reappointments. These are the same four people that have been ably serving in that role. It would be James Blank, Patrick Finland, Finland, Dale Hurtgem, and William Thompson. And these are two-year terms set to expire December 31st, 2024. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Motion to approve, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve James Blank, Patrick Finland, Dale Hurtgem, and William Thompson to the Building Board of Appeals for the two-year terms set to expire December 31st, 2024. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And then next item is item 25. This is a request to approve the Ethics Board reappointment. This would be for Mr. Tony Del Vilvano, in a three-year term set to expire December 31st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any questions or discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to appoint Tony Del Vilvano to the Ethics Board for a three-year term set to expire December 31st, 2025. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Last item for tonight is our add-on. This is a request to purchase equipment for the Senior Center computer lab in the amount of $41,481.95. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board. So this is actually through the CDBG block grant program. This was something that the board approved for us to apply for this grant. We were awarded this grant this past year, and this is for computers, laptops, some printers, and other computer software that will be used at the Senior Center. And again, this is block grant funded, so this is fully reimbursable.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the purchase of the Senior Center computer lab equipment in the amount of $41,481.95. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. This takes us to our second public comment of the evening. If there's anyone publicly, or I'm sorry, anyone present who wishes to speak, please make your way to the microphone. Anyone participating remotely, you can digitally raise your hand. Roger, do you see anybody digitally?
No, sir.
Nope, nobody present, so we're going to move on to board comments. Trustee Lucido?
Thank you to all the new board and commission members that were appointed and reappointed tonight. We really appreciate everybody stepping up to help out the township. And thank you to Parks and Rec, Sal and your staff, and Lacy, and anybody that had a hand in putting on the tree lighting and afterglow. It was a terrific event, and every year it seems to be getting better and better. So thank you and your staff for that.
Thank you, trustee Lucido. Trustee Nevers?
Yes, I too would like to commend Sal and his department. Driving in tonight, the lighting was spectacular, and the events, the fireworks, and, you know, a nice addition, and who doesn't like fireworks? So congratulations on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Nevers. Trustee Oliver?
Yeah. Again, great party, Sal. It was good. It's, fireworks were great. I was a little worried Santa wasn't going to make it, but I understand the supervisor and the clerk, and the treasurer found Santa and brung him in, so.
Got him home.
I tell you what, that was good. Thanks for all the, the people stepping up to, for the appointments. Mr. Miller, I know you've been around here a few years, so you've seen a lot of things happening. I think the historical societies suit you perfect. You really know what's going on with, with back in. Just one thing, when Mr. Miller was young, 23 mile.
He looks young. He looks young now.
Young boy going to school. He told me that 23-mile road was gravel, and it was just a pathway. So this, this young man knows a lot of history.
I was born on Hall Road, and it was gravel.
There you go.
It kind of became gravel again recently.
So again, thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee Guzmanno?
No comments tonight, and I apologize for my coughing, Jack. No worries.
No, no worries at all, trustee Guzmanno. Thank you. Treasurer Gillette? Again, I express appreciation to Mr. Miller and all the folks that are serving on boards and commissions for their service to the township. Appreciate it very much. I'd like to just comment, I'm not sure why the accolades are going out to Mr. Caro and the Parks and Rec Department. I mean, all they had to do was work several months, work a bunch of late nights, put a whole bunch of energy into it, find a way to do hot fireworks, find a way to get the grounds decorated, you know, bring in a bunch of volunteers, coordinate all those folks, you know, line up sponsors. It's not a big deal. So, but in all seriousness, a fantastic job, Sal. You, your team really did the township proud. Thank you. Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey?
I mirror all of my colleagues' comments this evening. I'm thankful for all the reappointments. Their commitment to the township only makes us, makes our job easier. Would like to congratulate the Parks and Recreation Center, but with my experience here over the years, it takes collaboration from several departments. So thank you to everybody that participated and actually appeared. In past, we didn't have a lot of attendance on our own board, so I appreciate everybody that takes the time to come and show our community all our hard work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Yes, congratulations to Sal and the entire staff. It was a great event, as always, and, you know, all the new changes. Anybody who hasn't been to the town hall complex this year yet, the lighting is all new and different, and it looks really pretty at night, so please take the opportunity to drive through and check it out. I want to thank all of the reappointments tonight, the board members and commissioners who volunteer their time to help make our community better. It's, it's always, it's always a good thing when there are people willing to volunteer, it just makes us that much stronger, so. And with that, if there is ever anybody who is interested in participating more directly in Township Matters, go to our website. We have an application on there all the time for various appointments. If you just fill it out, it gets sent to my office. I can keep it on file. That way I know out there who's interested in serving in these roles. And you can see on the website, as you click through the different commissions, when all the various commission reappointments happen. Most of them happen at the end of each year. I think there's a couple in the library, for example, that's in the spring, but for the most part, they're all right at this time of year. So feel free to fill out an application. So most people, I think, have noticed that there is activity finally at Pitchford Park. The first beginning, the silt fence is up, equipment, we start to be seeing equipment moving onto the grounds, tree clearing is going to begin, and to be honest, we couldn't be more excited that we finally have some progress up there. So the long wait at Pitchford Park is finally coming. Thank you to everybody who has helped make that a reality. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
Is there any discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by trustee Nevers, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote. Not a coughing sign. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.